Thank you. Madam Clerk, take the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Baumann.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Betsinger.
Here.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Are you voting when your president put down? Trustee Spurling.
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to items for separate action. Our first item is ordinance nineteen ninety-nine granting a special use, planned unit development, and additional special uses, and approving a zoning map amendment, and a preliminary plat of subdivision for Caris Acquisitions LLC, Caris Center for Commerce. Director Act.
Thank you. Trustees, you should have received an updated packet item for this one at your seats. We did have to make a small change to the ordinance based on the revision of adding the eight-foot bike path per our last discussion at the board meeting. So the deviation from the sidewalk has been amended to be a deviation with a sidewalk with the addition of the eight-foot bike path on there. So just while you have that item before you tonight. As I said, that ordinance has been amended to include the conditions from the Planning and Zoning Commission, including that eight-foot bike path along Caris Way, as opposed to sidewalks on both sides of the street. They are going to be required to apply for and obtain their final PUD and subdivision plat approvals before beginning construction of the proposed development, consistent with the timeline that's proposed in the ordinance. They have advised staff that within the next ninety days or less, they do intend to apply for their final subdivision plat approval. So this will allow them to move forward with the sale of the property for them, as well as the sale of the property to the proposed user, Ravago, on the southern site. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Representatives from Caris and Ravago are here, either in person or on Zoom, to answer any questions that you might have.
Did you receive any additional public feedback outside of the one email I think the board was copied on this week?
We did have one online inquiry that also came in last week that just asked a little bit more about whether they would be recycling plastics on the site and if there was any health or safety concerns with the project. So we replied back that they would not be recycling any of the plastic on site. There's no manufacturing. It's distribution and would all be happening indoors.
I received a couple of public comments. Nothing super significant. Some questions on vehicle traffic, which I think we addressed at the last meeting, timeline from a couple of residents. But truck traffic kind of seemed to be the main concern from constituents that I heard from over this last couple of weeks.
Mark, is it appropriate to talk about that railroad crossing? Or is that a separate issue?
I believe that's a separate issue. That's not related to this development.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, moved by Guyer, second by Baumann. Okay, trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you, that carries. Moving on to our next item, ordinance two thousand and one, approving the official zoning map for the Village of Montgomery, Kane, and Kendall Counties, Illinois. This is waiver of first and passage on the second reading.
Yes, based on state statute, we annually update our official zoning map to reflect any zoning amendments and annexations during the previous year. So the map has been updated with the various annexations and zoning approvals that have been approved in twenty twenty-two. The state statute does require that the zoning map be adopted no later than March thirty-first. So in order to meet this requirement, we are requesting waiver of first reading.
Okay, any questions for Director Apt on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marisak, second by Guyer. Take the roll, please. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Just wanted to mention a quick note about the Shering family. When the boundary agreements were being drawn up, this is way before my time on the board, I guess the Shering family, Mr. Shering in particular, was the one who said he really wanted that land to come into Montgomery. And he was well aware it would be zoned for manufacturing. So just really thankful to the family for having that vision and thinking so far in advance, and really just knowing what they wanted to do with the land. Just a thank you to them. All right, moving on to the next item for separate action, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one-two, accepting a village utility easement, Victorian Apartments Hawthorne Ridge property and the parcels. You see the two parcel numbers there. Director Apt.
Yes, as you may recall, back in twenty twenty-one, the board approved the purchase of several properties for the construction of our regional stormwater basins. The proposed storm sewer pipe that would be a part of the outfall for those basins is the reason for the easement tonight. As part of that project, we need to install the storm sewer outflow to facilitate future development in the area. The owner of the subject property has agreed to grant the village a utility easement, as well as an access easement for the village's installation and maintenance of the storm sewer pipe.
Can you just walk me through a little bit through this image here for the grant of easement that was in the packet? So where is this located on the property? Is it?
It's the far east side of the property.
Far east side, okay, thank you. I was missing the big picture on that, so that's why I asked that. Okay. Any other questions for Director Apt regarding this item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marisak, second by Youngerman. Take the roll, please. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Sorry, trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you, that carries. Moving on to our next item, ordinance two thousand and one, approving the official zoning map for the Village of Montgomery, Kane, and Kendall Counties, Illinois. This is waiver of first and passage on the second reading.
Yes, based on state statute, we annually update our official zoning map to reflect any zoning amendments and annexations during the previous year. So the map has been updated with the various annexations and zoning approvals that have been approved in twenty twenty-two. The state statute does require that the zoning map be adopted no later than March thirty-first. So in order to meet this requirement, we are requesting waiver of first reading.
Okay, any questions for Director Apt on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marisak, second by Guyer. Take the roll, please. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, which is ordinance two thousand and two, amending a comprehensive fee and deposit schedule for building and development and creating new section one dash twelve in the village code of ordinances. And we're having, my, oh, Director Apt, okay, Director Apt.
Yes, back in twenty eighteen, the village adopted a comprehensive fee and deposit schedule in order to consolidate information that was found in different parts of the village code and the zoning ordinance, and to add new fees to cover new permit types such as solar panels and cell towers and antennas. Then again, in twenty nineteen, upon review, we identified certain minor items that did need to be added to that fee schedule, which were adopted in twenty nineteen. Prior to that, though, the last major update and review of building and development fees was back in two thousand and eleven. So staff has conducted a fee analysis comparing the village's fee schedule with other communities, as well as analyzing staff time and effort to process certain permits, increases in contractual services, and new building and energy code updates. And based on this review, we're proposing to increase certain fees, as well as simplify other fees to help streamline the permitting process. Staff is also proposing some new permit fees for things like vehicle charging stations, detached garages, and generators, and asbestos abatement. Major highlights are that the base fee for building permits would be increasing to ninety to a hundred dollars from its current fifty to fifty-five dollars for a base fee. A new construction fees would be increasing from twenty-five dollars per one hundred square feet to thirty dollars per one hundred square feet. And work without a permit will result now in a hundred percent increase in the fee, rather than just a fifty percent increase. For planning fees, we're looking at increasing most of the fees from four hundred dollars to six hundred dollars, increasing the annexation fee to one thousand dollars. And then the subdivision and PUD fees would be changing to a base fee with an additional per acreage fee to account for some of the additional staff time that it takes to go through that review process. This should have minimal impact on the budget. The fee increases will have a small but positive fiscal impact on our revenues. We also did verify that simplification of certain fees would have a neutral fiscal impact on revenues.
I have a question. What is the current annexation fee?
Four hundred dollars.
It's four hundred dollars, and we're moving it to a thousand?
Thousand dollars.
And that's for residential, commercial, anywhere?
For anything. So a lot of communities will do it by a per acreage amount. In the end, especially with the annexation agreements and the mono-review that has to go through and going with the annexation agreement, I felt it was necessary to increase that fee from the four hundred to a thousand dollars.
I'm just, I'm thinking about these residents that we're trying to get to annex in, like over off of Montgomery Road, Aurora there. It becomes a pretty costly adventure. It's a sixty percent increase to a resident to try to come into town now. Just seems like it's a, it's not a big deal for a big parcel, but for a single-family residence, it's a pretty big.
From an unincorporated area?
Yeah.
But look at the better, I'll say that the better services that the villages, that the village provides.
That they pay for. But again, I'm just, because we've had some pushback on those people coming in anyways, because they have to pave a tap on the water, correct? Tap on for sewer. And then, now on top of that, we'll whack them for another thousand dollars on top of that. So suddenly, this is a twelve thousand dollar cost to annex into the village. Just, we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
What is the difference between this thousand-dollar annexation cost and then there's a table that has the annexation agreements based on acreage that go up to twenty thousand dollar fees? That is for deposits, so that is a deposit they have to put down to help cover attorney's fees related to the annexation agreement. And that is refunded back to them after everything has been approved and recorded.
Just to note, this is first reading, so if you have some more questions, this will be on our next meeting, I would assume it'll be on our next meeting. But if you have more questions, upon looking at everything again, we can certainly discuss it again at a future meeting.
If that is a concern of the board, we can also look, especially if it's for smaller residential lots specifically on Montgomery Road, we can look at splitting it up so that anything less than an acre could be kind of the new hundred, six hundred dollar base fee, and then anything over that would be the thousand dollars, if that would make the board more comfortable with those situations.
I just get concerned, because I know we're trying to get some of those folks to help clean up some of the boundaries to annex in, and there's been pushback. We've talked about trying to look at some of the tap-on fees even to try to assist with facilitating that transition. But, I mean, again, first reading, so we can have further discussion.
And with little to no impacts, budgetary impact, is this just placing us more in line with surrounding communities and what their fee structures will play? Or what role the conversation will play? I think generally, we were looking at it just because we know it is getting just more complicated to be reviewing permits and processing them and the staff time. And since it hadn't been looked at at a long time, we wanted to make sure we were covering our costs, as well as looking to see if we were in line with the other communities in the area.
And then would this, this would take, or would go into effect once we pass it? Or would it be with our next fiscal year?
It would go into effect once you pass it.
Okay, immediately, okay, well, immediately. Okay. So we're good, we'll just, this will not be on consent, it'll just go on the regular, gentlemen, so we can?
Future discussion.
Discuss, yeah. Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to our next item is the, where were we? Item E, award of contract to Denler Inc. in the amount of twenty-four thousand three hundred and seven dollars for the twenty twenty-three seal coding program. Engineer Ott, please.
Thank you. On March sixteenth, we had a bid opening to do the village's annual seal coding program. As the board may know, the village has various shared-use paths around town, and we recommend seal coding those every five years. So this year's program includes seal coding, stuff in the commed right-of-way and a path on Montgomery Road, and I can provide the board with a map of the areas that will be seal-coded this year. We had three bidders, and we recommend approval of a word be made to Denler Incorporated in the amount of twenty-four thousand three hundred and seven dollars, which is under budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there's any.
Have they done work for us before?
Yes, they have.
Okay.
They seal-coded Village Hall, I think, three years ago.
And the, by recommendation letter?
Yes.
Perhaps just a typo that states back to May of twenty-two?
Yeah, yes.
Just a typo, not, nothing that's been in the works for the last?
No, that's correct. Sorry about that.
Any other questions for Engineer Ott?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Marisak, second by Baumann. Take the roll, please. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item is the approval of the purchase of a Vermeer XL eighteen hundred chipper from Vermeer Midwest in the amount of ninety-four thousand two dollars and sixty-nine cents for the replacement of the Public Works tree chipper. Director Wolf.
Thank you, trustee Spurling. So the Village of Montgomery has extensive equipment that's used for various different applications. So the chipper replacement that you see in front of you tonight is utilized by the Public Works Department to provide services such as bulk brush pickup, as well as routine preventative maintenance efforts, such as pruning and tree removals of right-of-way trees. So tonight, this item has been identified in the budget and aligns with our vehicle replacement program. The current chipper that the Public Works Department utilizes is this identical piece of equipment. We've had very good luck with this particular piece of equipment, as well as this vendor, and therefore, we are requesting to move forward with a replacement in kind. The one thing to point out is that we will be utilizing our Sourcewell membership as well for the purchasing of this. So again, just a reminder to the board, the Sourcewell process is a third party that vets the pricing to make sure that it is at a competitive rate, so that way, we don't have to go out for a formal RFP and expedites the process for us and gives us flexibility to purchase the specified piece of equipment which we desire. So if there are any questions regarding this item, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I have one. Historically, with chippers, we've always had a diesel engine. I see this as a gasoline engine. Can you explain why we've switched over to gasoline?
So the reason for the switch is twofold. Number one, cost-effective. The diesel equipment is substantially more money. They've made a lot of progress as far as the gasoline engines come in this type of application. But more importantly, it relates to the aftermarket, or I'm sorry, not the aftermarket, the additional components that go with the diesel engines now to meet the tier-four standards. Those are, those take a def material, so there's a lot more maintenance involved in that. There's a lot more problematic items that come about with that type of engine. So the, going to the gasoline engine, which we demoed a unit, and staff was very happy with it, so we feel very comfortable moving forward. And again, I don't remember exactly off the top of my head, but a pretty substantial price difference as well. So the gasoline engine substantially cheaper.
You don't have to wait for a gas engine to read you in either, do you?
Correct.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mark, I do have a quick question for you.
Sure.
So because this is going into next year's budget, or it's part of next year's budget, correct?
Correct.
So when we do the ordering, are we putting any type of deposit out? Are we using any monies ahead of the budget time?
We are not. So the, one of the reasons too why bringing, I know it's, I apologize for not touching on this, a little unorthodox to bring it ahead of the budget approval. Again, as we are all aware, procuring equipment and vehicles is extremely difficult and volatile right now. So we had an opportunity, again, we're working very closely with all of our vendors for any type of replacement or new vehicle purchases, to find any slots or windows. So we had an opportunity, we were contacted by Vermeer for a current stock item that was being built. We had the ability to, as long as we got this approved tonight, be able to add the additional equipment that we wanted for this unit, so at the factory, and we'll be able to take delivery of it. It will be after May first. I want to say the timeframe was around June one. If we didn't go with this particular slotted unit, we would be looking at somewhere October, November timeframe. So again, a great opportunity, a great relationship that we have with Vermeer, and working with us to try to help us expedite the process.
Great, and thank you for seeing that opportunity there too as well. Any other questions?
I have a question. It says estimated delivery date is October two thousand twenty-three.
I'm sorry, that was a typo.
It's not October?
No, it'll be sooner than that.
Okay.
I want to say it was June timeframe, but I can double-check and circle back with you. The October timeframe would have been had we had not taken this stock unit that became available.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Okay, motion was made by Guyer and seconded by Marisak, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, take the roll, please. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
And that carries, thank you. Moving on to our next item is professional service agreement for construction engineering for the twenty twenty-three MFT and infrastructure road program with Engineering Enterprises in the amount of two thousand and five thousand, excuse me, two hundred and five thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars. Director Wolf.
Thank you, trustee Spurling. So as the village board is aware, we approved the contracts for Geneva Construction to begin this year's twenty twenty-three MFT and IRP program. We are looking to have a kickoff meeting, pre-construction meeting, this Thursday. So obviously, we'll be getting better dates on the construction start. The PSA being presented tonight is for the construction, observation, and engineering for the duration of the project throughout the construction season. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question, same question I asked at the last meeting. Geneva Construction will have the appropriate flagging, the appropriate road closures, the appropriate supervision, and they will communicate effectively with both the Village of Montgomery and its residents, so we don't have any issues?
Correct, and we will be proposing some dates here coming up after the pre-construction meeting to host our annual public meeting that we offer for the IRP MFT program, to try to address ahead of time any concerns or questions that residents may have with the program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Wolf? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Pleasure.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Marisak. Take the roll, please. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And our next item, our final item for separate action, professional services agreement with Engineering Enterprises Inc. in the amount of thirty thousand, is that right? Thirty thousand for the letter of interest for the U.S. EPA WIFIA program. Director Wolf.
Thank you, trustee Spurling. So as the village board is aware, we have partnered with our Waterlink partners, Yorkville Community of, United City of Yorkville, as well as the Village of Oswego, in selecting Lake Michigan as our long-term sustainable water source in the future. Obviously, we have talked in depth about the funding that will be needed for us to construct not only the pipeline, but also perform the infrastructure improvements that are needed as part of this project. So this is the first step of the project to applying for the WIFIA loan, would be the letter of interest submitted. EEI will be coordinating as well with StanTech, who has a vast amount of knowledge and experience in WIFIA funding and specific in that realm. So therefore, they will be moving forward. One thing to clarify, when you look at the budgeted amount and the amount proposed tonight, there's obviously a great difference. So there's enough money budgeted for, if the letter of interest was accepted, then we would be coming back to you for an additional PSA for the next steps of the process. So that's why there's a substantial difference there. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Any questions?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Marisak, second by Baumann. Take the roll, please. Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to items for discussion, we have our fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget discussion for our other funds section. Director Jennifer Miloski.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Make sure this is. Oops. Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. My name's Jennifer Miloski. I am the finance director for the Village of Montgomery. And I have another short presentation tonight on the fiscal year twenty-four budget. We will begin discussing tonight our special revenue funds and capital projects. And then we have our enterprise fund discussion scheduled for April tenth, along with our public hearing and the first reading of the fiscal year twenty-four ordinance. We have our second reading scheduled for April twenty-fourth, with hopeful passage at that point in time. So starting off with our special revenue funds. So special revenue funds account for governmental activity, revenues and expenditures that are restricted for a special purpose. The village currently has twenty special revenue funds, which include our motor fuel tax, our Montgomery Development Fund, our American Rescue Plan, several TIFs, and our SSA funds. So collectively, our special revenue funds account for fifteen point one million dollars of our fiscal year twenty-four recommended budget. This number does include eight point five million dollars of debt service issuance for TIF two. But for tonight's discussion, I've excluded that from the revenue side. So we'll discuss then our intergovernmentals, being our top revenue source for our special revenue funds, followed by the property taxes and our charges for services. So our intergovernmental funds, well, intergovernmental grants and contribution revenues are made up mainly of our ARPA funds that will have been earned at this point in time. So that includes special projects that we'll get into a bit later. Our second revenue sources are property taxes, so that's generated mainly through our TIF areas and our SSA areas. And then our charges for services is driven mainly by anticipated contributions in TIF So moving on to the expenditure side of special revenues. So we anticipate spending approximately six point one million in capital outlay for fiscal year twenty-four. We will discuss some great projects that the village is undertaking in the next few slides, but we also have three point nine million in contractual services, which include our MFT road repairs. It also includes our consultant fees for the TIFs and landscape maintenance for our SSA's. So moving on to our MFT fund this year, as you may recall, the village uses MFT funds for road projects biannually, every two years. We have two point four million budgeted for street repairs this year, or I'm sorry, Our second revenue sources are property taxes, so that's generated mainly through our TIF areas and our SSA areas. And then our charges for services is driven mainly by anticipated contributions in TIF two. So moving on to the expenditure side of special revenues, so we anticipate spending approximately six point one million in capital outlay for fiscal year 24. We will discuss some great projects that the village is undertaking in the next few slides, but we also have three point nine million in contractual services, which include our MFT road repairs. It also includes our consultant fees for the TIFs and landscape maintenance for our SSAs. So moving on to our MFT funds this year, as you may recall, the village uses, uses MFT funds for road projects biannually, every two years. We have two point four million budgeted for street repairs this year, in, or I'm sorry, in fiscal year 24, and we have a hundred and fifteen thousand budgeted for roads alt. I will touch on some of the streets that have been slated for repair in one of the future slides. So our next fund that we'll be discussing, just some highlights for, is our TIF two fund.
Excuse me, Director Miloski.
Yes.
What was our expenses on roads alt this past year?
Oh, I don't have that number with me tonight, but I can get it to you unless Director Wolf has an idea of how much we've spent so far.
I don't have the total. We haven't taken our full amount yet. We did do the eighty percent as well, so it changes the figures from what we had calculated, a hundred percent, so we can get that information.
Just make note.
Just a second. Tagging on to that question, do you think there's, because this winter has been relatively mild, and we had some salt from last year, and we're taking eighty percent of this year, does that basically negate potentially the need for salt next, or are we gonna, at some point, if we continue to have mild winters and we have to take eighty percent, we're building storage for salt that we don't necessarily need?
Correct, so there's always a gamble, there's always a risk involved when we look at budgeting, specifically in this case, as opposed to where we're at now, which is more further along in the season where we can truly make a determination of tonnage. So, you know, keeping in mind that when we do these figures, this is in the November, December timeframe, that we're putting this together, so we have a substantial amount of our winter season left ahead of us, so we always kind of have to factor in our worst-case scenarios. But yes, touching on your point, yes, we did have salt left over from last year, as well as obviously a large amount from this year, so the eighty percent was the minimum that we have to take, and we're required to take through the CMS program. Looking at next year, we'll, we'll be reducing our tonnage, but again, there's always the variable that if we have an above-average season, then it could put us in that predicament. CMS is proposing some changes from what I understand in their contract. I am working to get clarification on this, but they are taking away the eighty percent, one hundred and twenty percent, so they are factoring in that you put in a one hundred percent order, and that is what you are committed to, no less and no more. So that changes things a little bit, because this was a perfect year example for us to have that nice flexibility to take the eighty percent when we didn't need that excessive amount, so.
Thank you.
There are other avenues to go through. There's possibility of going through the county. We haven't explored that option. We've used the CMS platform for many years and had good luck with it, so obviously, that's a change for us moving forward. I think this year with us having a surplus, which again, just a reminder, puts us in a, in a good position to be in, that it's not as important, I think, for us to explore different options for next year, but it is something that we have talked about. There's an opportunity for us to potentially partner, I believe, with King County and also DuPage County through some intergovernmental agreements, so we're, we're looking at that. But CMS really has the best buying power, because there's so many people participating in it, that the, the cost for the, the materials is typically hard to beat by other suppliers.
Okay, so moving back to TIF two, so TIF two includes the area along the Orchard and Alcott corridors. Fiscal year 2024 includes five point seven million in projects for the fund. So we will see the Alcott Road widening and water main improvements, the Nell Road extension and basin improvements, and as I mentioned prior, there will be debt service that'll help fund these projects for fiscal year 24 as well. So moving on to our capital funds, so collectively, the village has four funds classified under the capital umbrella. They are, they include our capital improvement, infrastructure improvement, and our vehicle equipment replacement fund, affectionately referred to as the VERF fund. Our largest revenue source here is our intergovernmentals once again. This is primarily made up of our non-home rail sales tax. We budgeted four point three million in revenues for non-home rail sales tax for fiscal year 24. We are also anticipating approximately seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in grant funding. Charges for services come in at one point six million and one point three in other taxes. And just to note, other taxes include our municipal utility taxes that residents pay on electrical and natural gas and telecommunication or phone bills. So moving on, and if you haven't guessed already, a lot of our expenditures or expenses on the capital side go to our capital outlay. So we have approximately fourteen million dollars budgeted in capital outlay and capital funds, so that's a very big number that the community sees as a big investment in. So moving on to what actually is included in that, so our capital improvement fund, here we will see the improvements of Montgomery Park this year, hopefully in time for Montgomery Fest, and this also includes restoration of that shoreline. We will also see the completion of the Public Works Building. Mill Street Bridge improvements are also slated for fiscal year 24. The bad news is it will suspend our bridge sign program for another year, but the good news is there will be a freshly painted and better-lit bridge to place the signs on the following year. And fingers crossed, if we should obtain the grant funding, we will also see the installation of Arbor Park on the west side of town. Our infrastructure improvement fund will continue with our IRP program with approximately four point two million in expenses. Roads in this year's program include First, Second, and Third Avenues, Arbor Ridge Drive, Catherine Lane, Deer Run, and Edgewater, to name a few. We will have a complete list of these streets on, available on the village's websites for residents to view, as well as this presentation. All right. So the village will also continue investing in our equipment and fleet in fiscal year 24. As you can see, we are budgeted for one point two million in purchases from our VERF fund. We have additions to the fleet coupled with scheduled replacements. These purchases allow staff to enhance services and operations, which include snow plowing and leaf collection. Our police department will also have new body worn cameras to replace existing units, and we will also have offsetting revenue for that in the form of a grant. That actually concludes my presentation with some of the highlights from the special revenue funds and our capital funds. Or like I said prior, our budget presentation will conclude on April tenth with the discussion of our enterprise funds, and we will also hold the public hearing that night, as well as a reminder to, that residents can view the budget strategic plan, strategic plan progress report, and budget presentation on the village's website. And I am happy to address any questions, should there be any additional questions tonight?
All right, thank you very much. Another lovely presentation.
Thank you.
Very helpful, thank you. All right, we are moving on to new or unfinished business. Start to my left, Trustee Betzinger, anything? Marisak? Youngerman? Baumann?
No.
Guyer? Just want to mention, there is an election next week, just encourage everyone to vote, and that's it for now. All right, you can see our schedule of future meetings, and with that, we are done with people's business. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Youngerman, seconded by Marisak, take the role, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Baumann.
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.